Testing. Good afternoon. We'd like to, today is Monday, November 1st. And I'd like to welcome everyone to our work session. Board members present in the boardroom are members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. Online, we have member Holloman. In addition, in the boardroom, we have Dr. Dina Bishop. And we also have staff who are going to walk us through today's agenda item. All right, so we are not called to order. We have a quorum. Item B on the agenda is our request for information. Yes, let's have a look at our requests. If we can. I think we've, I think we've taken care of all of them, but I want to be sure. Okay, so all of our immediate, we don't have anything that's not prioritized at this moment. Is that correct? Okay. Any requests from the board, request for information, new ones today that you want to add? Yes, member Donley.
I just wanted to follow up on the municipal channel information.
Oh, yes. It went out in board report, board connect. Let's see if I can remember.
So what do we do next? It seems like they're willing to put us on, they want us on there. It won't cost anything to be on there. There's, I guess the only issue was the transcribing, which the Assembly seems to deal with fine.
Dr. Bishop.
Yeah, thank you. I'm looking into it. There was some recent update that the Assembly is moving towards streaming services as well. Just given that cable is actually moving to the Yukon and things. And we can bring additional information. So after we had written that, there was an update announced at the Assembly in regard to use of that. So we'll have to double check back and look at expenses and what board does. The, the use of cable is, is just narrowing the thing and it's growing in streaming services. So we can, but that came up after.
The board connect.
The board connect, yeah. So we can readdress that and just put it back out.
Okay. So we can put that, just add that back to the list, please.
Madam President.
Yes, member Holloman.
Yeah, member Holloman, I was just going to update, member Donley, as a GCI customer, I noticed that Channel 9 is moving to Yukon, which means for someone to see it, they would have to subscribe to GCI and be on the GCI network. Yukon doesn't have the ability to deliver to a subscriber unless they are actually on the GCI network. So it's not only more difficult to see it via Channel 9, starting in about two weeks, it'd be a lot more restrictive. YouTube broadcast would allow anybody that's got internet access, which a Yukon subscriber would have to have, to see our meetings literally from anywhere in the world, it's internet service. So I would argue that, that we are the, we're on the easiest platform to be seen and the cheapest by a long shot.
Thank you, member Holloman. We will, we will include that information in our follow-up.
Mr. Blackenstein, did you need to add anything to that? Or, or member Holloman really took care of that, just in the transition of GCI itself over to streaming services.
Okay. All right, thank you. Seeing no further comments or requests for information, that completes item B. We are now on item C, which is our SIR3 funding update. Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just going to turn this over to Jim Anderson and Andy Ratliff, who've prepared a presentation and, but of course, staff can answer questions and engage in a dialogue for, for better understanding. Thank you.
Good evening. Slide please. So just as a, a quick background refresher, a month or so ago, maybe six weeks ago, we talked about SIR3. We started with what was in the CARES Act and what the district used those funds for. And that was a really immediate response in preparation to get schools open last year. SIR2 came out, and I think everyone recalls, we used about all of it. Is dedicated towards this current fiscal year. And $30 million of the 51 million was used towards retaining PTR as part of the budget process. And you'll see as we go through this brief, that we'll talk about splitting out SIR3 and not pretending that we know right now everything that would be used for the next two and a half plus years, but breaking it out into what it might be used for for fiscal year '22 and '23 and '24 separately, to allow time for the continual community input the board always gets, the board input to the administration. And all of those things that we just don't know today, that's going to be in front of us a year from now. We talked about giving you a quick update on 1st of November, so we're there today. Talked about revenue drivers and the pending fiscal cliff. If we used all of the grant money for capabilities that would have to be continued in the future, and if the state doesn't figure out how to give us more revenue between now and FY25. And it was kind of a worst, worst-case scenario that in FY25, if we remain flat funding with no additional and tried to do everything we're doing today, that, that fiscal cliff deficit would be about 75 million by the time we get to FY25. Naturally, we're all going to do everything we can to avoid that. But, but that's kind of the set for, for how we started looking at SIR3. Slide please. Real quick overview of SIR3. We'll do many deep dives, I'm sure, over the next couple of years, but I would like to draw your attention to the very last bullet. So of all of the federal relief funds, SIR3 is the most restrictive in that their reporting requirements require us, when we decide to spend money on something, to be able to record, to be able to report on outcomes associated with those projects, programs, all of the different purposes that we would use SIR3 for. One of the things from Council of Great City Schools, one of their biggest was not to use, thank you. Sorry, I've been wearing a mask all day, was their first recommendation is not to use all of the funding or large amounts of the funding towards something that naturally creates a long-term cost that later on you have to back off. They also recommended not using it for, large amounts of it, for immediate use for recruitment and retention of personnel, because then you don't have the money to do what it's really focused on, which is student outcomes. And I'm sure we'll have many discussions on that topic over the next weeks. Next, please. So we did walk through the community input we received. We had surveys, town hall, more than one board meeting at which a lot of people came to speak about what they thought we should use SIR3 for. And that was part of the federal grant. We were required to make sure we got community input. I think most of the board recalls Dr. Bishop sent it specifically, the survey to all the major groups in town, and as well as the unions and naturally, community, staff, and students. So if you look at the three areas where the survey focused, it was underneath the second main bullet, there's three groups. There was operational spending priorities, instructional priorities, and highly valued spending priorities all around. And, and you will note that, that facility repairs and air quality improvements, not just in our SIR discussions, but in really a lot of our staff input since COVID started, was really trying to make our facilities as safe and effective as we possibly could. So you'll see on the next slide that we did focus on that. And you'll see the other areas, and we have put this, put, built four buckets to cover where we are right now in, in looking at where the funding will go. I'd like to point out that nearly every senior person in the district is on one or numerous committees, and that this is, this is really a, a pretty massive undertaking in every department in the Ed Center, trying to come up with all of the things we're going to put in. So what we did not attempt to do on the next slide is give you 100 slides worth of all the different possible permutations of programs and projects, but to try to break it out into categories so you understand where the district is and where our priorities are facing at this time. So if you look at the buckets, the first one's facility improvements. Underneath that, you'll see things that we've talked about with the board over, over the last several months. I don't think any of those are a surprise. And then learning loss initiatives. Of everything in the grant, there was only one requirement, that at least 20%, which for us is about 22.5 million, had to be applied toward learning loss initiatives. There, there's, what, what I put in about eight or nine bullets is really hundreds of slides from all the different committees on the instructional side in their committees as they, they work toward that goal. And if you have any details or any detailed questions, we certainly can address, but at this time, really wanted to just provide a good overview of all the different areas, the focus areas that we're looking at applying SIR2 funds toward, or SIR3 funds toward. And certainly, if there's any questions, we've got a whole team here that, that can help answer that. On reduced class size, again, we used $30 million of SIRSIA or SIR2 funds for the FY22 this fiscal year budget. And, and that's where reduced class size came in. And there certainly is the very high likelihood that some portions of SIR3 would continue to be used for that in a somewhat stair-stepping approach over the next few years. We also have, as we discussed earlier, and we'll discuss toward the end, inflationary costs. Then finally, the board goal initiatives, really on reading implementation and career, college, life-ready initiatives. We certainly do plan on using a portion for that. So if you look at the buckets and you add it all up, it's about 30-plus million dollars more in ideas right now than what we actually have in SIR3 available. So just keep that in mind. We, we know that we have to narrow stuff down and prioritize to meet what has come out of the committee groups so far. I will pause for a second to see if there's any questions.
Yeah, and just in correcting, I don't want you to think that senior people are sitting around their offices coming up with all this. We're actually on committees that are inclusive of different people from different parts of the organization, different teachers, other people that are on the air quality. It's really working with, you know, the, the operations side of the house. If someone in one side is not, you know, telling others what they should do, and each of these, like we have a math working group, a reading working group, and they are inclusive of representatives from around the district.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Bishop.
So Jim, just to clarify, you said for the bucket that's, that's labeled reduced class size, did you say we had some, that came from, some of that came from SIR2?
It did for this fiscal year. When you see this 46, 40 to 60 million dollar bucket.
For the next.
That's potentially where SIR3 funds might be used. Whether it's ASDV, recruiting to retain staff in hard-to-fill positions, offsetting inflation, and all those other items that I put on here, potentially. Those needs are there if we were to continue operating the way we operate today.
Okay. Other questions? Oh, yes. I see member Jacobs and then member Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. I was just curious if we could obtain the, the rosters of the various working groups that are engaging in discussions right now.
Yes, Dr. Stock and his teams can get those.
Thank you.
Member Donley.
Thank you. So Jim, let me get this straight. We used SIR2 funds to close the FY22 projected revenue shortfall, which is, was in the 12 million dollar range. And what we're looking at on this slide is the projections for FY23?
We used $30 million roughly of, of SIR2 funds towards maintaining a PTR, and that was equivalent to a PTR of four across every grade level for this fiscal year because we knew we had a budget deficit. So 30 of the $50 million was used really for those classroom personnel and, and some support staff as well, of course, to be able to source this fiscal year.
And the 12 million you probably read ahead, you'll see we fall short of projections for enrollment this year. So our budget was built with that 30 million plus what we had expected to come in with enrollment. Enrollment fell short, as we shared last Friday. So hence, we are, right now, there's some adjustments with that because we might have, there's a, what is that called, those funds? The military funds?
The Federal Impact Aid. And we'll, we'll talk more about the 12 million. The 12 million might not end up being 12 million, and we can walk you through that as we get to that slide, unless you would like to skip.
No, let's continue through. Let's get, let's just go through and then we'll.
Okay. We're, we're good either way. So when you look at, at this slide, I, I tried to show those items. When you look at a, a arrow that starts in FY22, you should expect to see in non-action at the next board meeting, many of those items in more in detail for any funds request where we think we need to use SIR3 funds this fiscal year. And so I, I just wanted to make sure there weren't any surprises, that we kind of foretell what you're going to see in a couple of weeks, and of course, you'll see it when it hits in board docs anyway. We don't expect the vast majority or a significant amount of SIR3 being spent in FY22, with the exception of school safety items and air cleanliness, which is one of the main priorities of SIR3, although there will be some use for recruitment, retention of hard-to-fill staff, and some small portions for reading initiatives. You're really going to see the larger amounts for FY23 and FY24 later on. Now, because, and, and we'll get to the revenue slide, Mr. Donley, in, in just a few seconds, because we do have reduced revenue, and we know that we're going into the budget cycle in just a couple of months, we plan on showing what, what we recommend using SIR3 for in FY23, at the same time that we also brief and give the board the preliminary budget for next year. So just like the SIRSIA money or the SIR2 money that we use for this fiscal year, we can show how we're going to use a combination of operational funding and SIR3 to meet board goals and priorities for fiscal year '23. So we won't brief in any level of detail up until that time, additional beyond what you'll see in the board memo in just a couple of weeks. And if there's, yes, sir? I mean, yes, Madam President.
That's fine. Oh, I'm.
As, as you do that, could you help us understand? Is it, you got this decrease in what we're getting is revenue, but that's modified by the state hold harmless clause that descends over a series of years, plus, plus we've got this federal funding come in for, for the, the SIR money, for these impacts.
On the next two slides, we, we plan on briefing.
But as you talk about it, can you help us understand what happens at the end of the, the series here? Because when the federal funny money goes away and the state mitigating impact less or dissipates and is gone, what are we going to be faced with?
I certainly can.
I'm hoping to identify.
And, and I think it's better to wait just a couple of slides and then I can talk through, because really, it, it ends up, when you look at transportation has been flat since FY16, and operational funding or the BSA, based student allocation, has been flat since FY17. We are at the point where if you look at FY17, 5980, which is the base student allocation, and you use the Bureau of Labor Statistics CPI calculator to look at what the buying power would be if we had the same BSA as, as FY17, what it would be today, and we would need $700 more added to the BSA to be able to have the same buying power we had in fiscal year '17. And, and quite honestly, it's time to speak to the legislature. It's time to work the legislature, because at some point, you can't discount that natural real inflation has occurred over the last five-plus years, and it's in the form of, in buying power, about $700 increase to the BSA. And I think that will probably, hopefully, be a legislative priority for the board. Potentially, the, the transportation as well. I think the board's aware that we've had a transportation deficit, not counting the COVID year, where we, we were able to save some costs. It's time for the state to start working at building that revenue back to even, which means an increase. And if they, you know, so when you talk about a fiscal cliff, it, it depends, in a most pessimistic world, where you say the state can't possibly figure out how to do this, then the fiscal cliff would be pretty large, around $75 million. If you look at the world we live in, where oil's $85 a barrel, and the state's looking at getting potentially 800 million plus more this year than what they budgeted, and so there should be optimism to start encouraging the legislature to, to, to decrease that gap we have caused by inflation, then, then you would be an optimist and say, this is the year to go after the legislature and try to get the BSA increased. So that changes the dynamics. The fiscal cliff is purely dependent upon revenue and, and what the state can or, or can't do to figure out how to increase school funding. But I, I'm not going to say all that again in two slides, but I was, I was trying to answer the question to make sure you were comfortable that we do know how to get there. I think a lot of us in the room know how to get there. And, and really, this year, it's taking advantage of that additional revenue the state has and, and working as a, as a, you know, cohesive board and administration and, and trying to convince the legislature, it's, it's time. So on the next slide, barring any other questions, Andy will talk about the Oasis count and the projected revenue shortfall, and then we'll talk a little bit about the Federal Impact Aid, which is 7.1 million, that might reduce this. Andy?
Thank you. So this, you know, this really doesn't fit into the ESR money insofar as it's like not a direct, directly we spend money on, but it does kind of lead into some more of the conversation we want to have. And I don't believe that we've shown you anything regarding what our actuals for FY22 might be after we got the Oasis count. At the end of last week, we did get the Oasis, a preliminary Oasis count. These will change a little bit as we get, our ADM is reconciled with other districts and everything kind of gets finalized to the state, but we don't expect it to change by a lot. The first circle you see in red, that's the ADM change based on our adopted budget versus what we actually came in brick and mortar schools. So about 1,900 students fewer than what we built our adopted budget on. Still a sizable increase over what we had the previous year, but not as much as we'd hoped for. Correspondence also down by 400-plus students, but really, the bottom line on this is about $12.3 million in revenue is going to, is a, a revenue loss based on the projections or the adopted budget versus the current Oasis counts. And you can see in there, to the, Mr. Donley's point about the hold harmless, we got an ADM adjustment in there of 1,664 ADM, and that's the 50% of the hold harmless. And the way that's calculated is the base year is FY20, so whatever our school size adjusted ADM in FY22 is, we get half of that back because we're in the second year of this hold harmless adjustment. And when, that's about $10,000 per ADM on state and local funds, about $16 million. So that, that's a really a big increase that we have based on this hold harmless statute. For next year, if we had about the same ADM as we do now, that, that hold harmless adjustment gets roughly halved. So it's about 830 students would be our increase if we had the same ADM as we have now. Another, that's about $8 million. So as you lose those students, that hold harmless adjustment has quite a bit more value to it. If we had got exactly what we had, exactly the amount of ADM that we had on the adopted, that hold harmless adjustment for next year would decrease by about 3.1 million. But in reality, you know, we don't think those students are going to come back. If we're not going to get to the level that we projected, then your next year, our starting budget deficit, if all things being equal, would be go from about $12 million to about $20 million with that additional old harmless reduction. So that's kind of leading us into the next slides, when we're, we start talking about our revenue drivers. Oh, the other thing on that, it's not on that slide, but the other thing we wanted to address would be the Federal Impact Aid decision that may be coming out of the federal government. They did rule that Alaska's formula, when taking transportation into account, would they, the state can no longer deduct any sort of amounts for receiving federal impact aid. So right now, we get federal impact aid, which is a federal program that offsets federal property where we can't levy property taxes. So we get this money, and then the state says, well, we, we're comparable on a adjusted ADM per student funding basis within like 25%. So it's suddenly, it is, it's allowable to deduct 90, up to 90% of impact aid, and that percentage varies depending on how much local money you get. So if you tax to the cap and you have all the additional local money, it comes out to about 50% of our, of the, the 50% of the impact aid that you get gets taken back by the state in the form of less state funding. The state recently lost the initial ruling on that, so they can no longer deduct this federal impact aid that districts, or a portion of the federal impact aid that districts are receiving. For the state, it's about 75 to 90 million dollars in total. For Anchorage, it's a little over 7 million of that. Some districts would get a whole lot back, almost doubling their budgets, and some wouldn't get any. And that's just kind of the nature of how this federal impact aid deduction works. If they're not getting impact aid money, they don't get any deducted. But some, some places do get a lot of money from that. So we're still waiting, the state has appealed the federal ruling, and we're waiting on that appeal to go through to see if we'll actually be able to realize that seven-plus million dollars. So of the 12 million this year and the potential for 20 next year, that could be offset by about 7 million in each year.
And to give a little history on, on the federal impact aid, there were three states that were, were doing the same thing Alaska used to do. A couple of years ago, Kansas was pulled by the federal government. They did appeal and are still appealing again, but did not win their appeal. And I think Arizona, I think, is the last state that is currently able to withhold portions of federal impact aid. So it's definitely a long road. In the meantime, the state's obligated by current directives given to them to not withhold federal impact aid. So we do, depending on, on this appeal, if it's not held this year, we will get that money this year until a decision is made. And then you can see at the bottom of this slide that just shows the, we're in FY22, it's 50% for hold harmless, and by '24 it ends.
Madam President, on federal impact aid?
Yes.
Thank you. If that federal ruling holds. If that federal ruling holds, that's going to throw the entire school funding foundation formula out of whack.
It is, by about, it's, they're going to have to open up the formula and address what currently is a step, just following basic need. And so the whole discussion on everyone's reluctance to open the formula.
Yeah.
So everything from district cost factor to everything else in the formula, there would be an absolute need to open up that formula and modify it. So I think that would be a good time for us to pursue potentially other changes, primarily the district cost factor, and whether we really are the cheapest place in Alaska to operate a district. Because once it opens, it opens completely, right? And that's why there's been such pressure in Juneau not to open the formula, because ultimately, any changes mean there may be winners and there may be losers.
And so the new members of the board know how significant that is, just the district cost differential, if it was adjusted to current projections, we think it could mean an additional $30 million to Anchorage.
Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. I was just wanting to confirm that the $12 million deficit includes the receipt of the $7 million or so from the federal impact aid ruling?
It does, it does not. So assuming that the appeal is not approved in this fiscal year, then we will retain that $7.1 million, and this year's fiscal year deficit in revenue would drop to five.
And Madam President, just to add to that, for new board members, when we present a lot of times projections like this, we try to share with the board the worst-case scenario so that there's no surprises. But we have, like for our budgets and things like that, for our employees that we know, we try to budget within a narrower sense of things that are known, when we know salaries and people and things like that. So just to remind you that a lot of times, we'll just share, like, this could be the worst, we don't think about it, and then we'll also share, these are our assumptions, why we're doing this. And so always, that's a great question, I just want others to know, just reach out and ask, because when we share these, we're making some assumptions, and we weigh like, you know, what is the worst-case scenario, and do we really believe it will come to fruition? And on this one, we just don't know, we don't have enough information to guess one. So it's literally 50/50, so we figured we better tell you what it could be.
And in December, on top of the pro forma, we will provide the first fund balance projection for the end of the year, and that gives us two full plus payroll cycles to be able to forecast all of our projected costs for the rest of the year. And we always provide that in December, we've been pretty accurate, really, over the last several years, give or take a few million in December. So you'll see that about the same time you see the pro forma, and I think you'll, you know, have a better, comfortable feel as to where we think we'll end up this year.
The reason we can do this is since 2016, we've changed business processes under Jim's leadership to be able to, we used to have multiple IDs for people, depending, the code went to the funding source, and now it's literally a person. So we can narrow down a salary, cost, new, things like that. So we've just gotten better at it. And the reason is, is because the board wants to know, for budgeting, a lot of times, for a while, and Andy can remember, we were utilizing, when we didn't have state funds, we were utilizing fund balance for PTR reductions as well.
Okay, I don't see any other questions.
Slide please. So if you look at our next steps, I think I already told you, we do expect to provide an initial FY22 SIR3 recommendation board memo at the next board meeting, and then we'll talk about the details of that. In December, the pro forma, and the pro forma for those who are not aware, it's a very detailed cost estimate, it lays out all of the assumptions, anticipated cost increases and inflationary drivers, and it kind of sets the stage for, if we did everything that we were going to do next year, just like we're doing it this year with operational funding, this would be our starting deficit coming into the budget build in January, and that's a good time for the board, because you'll see it in the course of two different board meetings, to get a good understanding for why we think we're going to be where we are for the starting point of building a budget, and to get your priorities as, so we can work them in and make sure that we're focused on the right things as we build our recommended budget. Then you'll see in January, as I'd already kind of given you a heads up, the FY23 budget and the FY23 SIR3 board memo will both be presented at the same time, because we do anticipate our budget for next fiscal year having some composition of both general funds as well as SIR3. Because we always, we're the first district in the state to get a budget passed, we always pass our budget before any decisions really have been made in Juneau. So it doesn't mean that we won't pass a budget and then still keep really working Juneau to try to get legislative actions to occur to change our revenue assumptions, but it, I mean, we're kind of in that boat every year. And then you'll see at the bottom, the Strategic Plans Task Force does include a lot of other people, I certainly misspoke when I said seniors in the building, it's a pretty large group of folks trying to help us come up with the best way to use these funds. And barring any questions?
Member Holloman, do you have a question?
Do you say?
Okay, I think he said no. Okay. So can you go back to your comment on legislative priorities? Because we're in the midst of trying to get our priorities together, and I think we created three buckets. One was funding, instructional programs, and what's the third? Wellness, health and wellness, mental health. So you said the funding, can you just restate or advise us as to the funding situation again?
Absolutely, and Andy and I will build products with the Communications Department and Dr. Bishop and others to try to be able to visually portray what the impact of flat funding really is. Because every year, when the state funds us in accordance with the current statute, they do come out and say, we fully funded education, but every time they fully funded education, it was a 2% decrement to what would have been fully funding education if, in fact, it had ever kept up with inflation, right? So we're starting five years plus behind as we go into next year, unless there's some legislative action toward changing the BSA. In the past, I think, Dr. Bishop naturally has been in education longer than me, I think there's been multiple attempts to do one-time funding above and beyond, because that doesn't create a permanent cost to the state. I know it's happened a couple times, a few times since I've been here, and I think in the past, it happened numerous times as well. You know, that's probably something we discuss as we're talking to legislators and what's likely to pass. It may be that, you know, one-time funding is a short-term solution, but it never really fixes the problem, it just kicks the can down the road, and then ultimately, you're where we are now, which is five straight years of flat funding in terms of the BSA.
Thank you. Member Higgins?
It seems to me we've got several issues on the table. One is adequate funding was established with the Pikesodin study, and we're probably 140 million plus behind at this point, if we were to update that, that's one issue. The second one is fair and equitable funding. We are 7% of the cost of living from an operation, we're higher than Kenai, we're higher than Matt Sue, and that has to do with compliance issues as far as equitable funding that we're not in compliance with. And that would be interesting to see, how would that dollar redistribution impact Anchorage as well in regards to it? And then the other one is just if you got status quo and you're having inflation, but there were two other, to me, larger issues, and that is, making sure the public understands what adequate funding is and why, and legislators, but then also the equitable issues, and putting that out there is something that the board needs to go forward with it and say, wait a minute, you know, classroom sizes is important to the vast majority of states, we're not there, we have a study done based upon court rulings elsewhere, we know our healthcare is so high that it drives us out of sync with a lot of other states right there, and that needs to be, that needs to be a factor, we ought to be able to put in front of the legislature and say, look, this is a factor that doesn't impact education, it just impacts cost, and we need to identify that. And then, like I said, let's update the Pikesodin, let's look at the equitable issue with Kenai, with Matt Sue, and anyplace else in the state, because our cost of living is not the bottom at all, and then be able to look at what that impact would be. Because I really think, the, at least from an Anchorage standpoint, legislative, you know, representatives, we ought to be arguing that point, to at least have a fair review. How much would it take to get that review done, though? Is that something we could do to be able to lay out to them? Because that's a legal compliance issue, and we're out of compliance on that area about fair and equitable funding.
And I know you understand, and Mr. Donnelly definitely understands, the foundation formula and district cost factor was originally generated out of an ISER study, which was a very involved, complex study across all 54 LEAs in the state. I have to be honest, I'm pretty sure Andy and I could not pull that off or anything close to that, and I wouldn't want to put numbers out there that don't account for fuel prices and all those other things that the ISER study did. I don't know if you're aware, Mr. Donnelly tried at least two times to get the legislature to fund an ISER study or an ISER-like study, and there was just so much pushback from everyone else, the Pikesodin is much easier to be able to update, but to try to internally develop something that may or may not be accurate, like the ISER study, that kind of in-depth analysis, I don't think we could do it in-house, and I don't think it would be accepted by the legislature, because it would be a one-sided, clearly not unbiased document, they could just shoot holes in it left and right. And in fact, we tried to get the Assembly to put money towards an ISER study, and when they, when we talked to ISER, they said, unless it's the legislature, we're not going to do a study, because it'll clearly look biased when the money came from Anchorage to do it, this needs to be a legislative action. And then it just, in the chaos of everything else happening in Juneau, it just couldn't get momentum to push through. And I'll be honest, I think we have to work with our Anchorage Caucus pretty hard, because even within the Anchorage Caucus, there certainly is not agreement that the foundation formula needs to be looked at, but, you know, Mr. Donnelly brought up, if the federal impact aid decision forces an opening of the formula, the best time to try to get the entire formula updated is then.
And you know, just for the benefit of the newer board members, if you look at our legislative priorities from the last two years, it's, at the very top is fund study to reassess district cost differential in BSA metric. So we have been pushing for that, but it is not a universally accepted idea, to put it frankly. So were you done, Mr. Higgins? Okay. I think not, Member Donnelly?
Yeah, I think Jim gave a pretty good review of what happened a few years ago. We only, the Assemblyman Chairman, Assembly Chair at that time, Dick Trainey, actually got the money, we had the money, and we went and we're negotiating with ISER to do it, and they said, no, unless the legislature. And then we went to the Alaska Association of School Boards, and we asked them to ask the Institute for Economic and Social Research to do it, and we couldn't get the School Board Association to ask for it, because obviously, some schools would benefit and some wouldn't districts. So that initiative failed. I guess my point now is that we really need to do some serious strategizing about the next session, and try to find who's going to be our allies and who's going to be our opponents in restructuring the foundation formula, because there's going to be winners and losers, there's no way to avoid that. And right now, we need to start trying to figure out who our team's going to be to advocate for certain elements of that formula.
Okay. Dr. Bishop?
And where I found that there is some kind of convergence on this is, again, through accountability measures, because certainly, you mentioned the Pikesodin and small class sizes, 48 of the, you know, 53 school districts have that, you know, and are happy with their class sizes, and so it really is the larger school districts that struggle with this, but also, some school districts see that having a school nurse on site is a benefit, and you could spend your money differently there. I mean, so they're, they're just, we need to really work with the rural folks to find this interest convergence, if you will. You know, I think through the Reading Bill and other legislation, there is, and will be, funds there, but they want to tie them back to outcomes. And presently, I mean, you know, Senator Begich with his bill is getting back up, the Reading Bill is with Drummond right now, so there's lots of discussion, but I, that's even a whole nother, you know, that's kind of where they're looking to see, when you talk about the interests of different legislators individually, and listen to them and what they share, they do want to fund schools, and they do want outcomes, and so how do we get them to work together and piecing this together?
Thank you. Member Lessen?
No. Is that better? I think that one of the, I want to go back to your comments earlier about the Council for Great City Schools and the recommendation not to allocate funds really to long-term costs, and maybe that includes the idea of not using it to retain personnel. I understand that, you know, at a concrete level, this is, it's Cinderella money, it's going to end, it will go poof, it's not guaranteed for the duration, that needs to come really from the legislator, the legislature, through some of these structural changes. But I remain deeply concerned about the state of our personnel retention right now and the status of that, mostly considering how difficult and challenging this current year is. You know, when I have people tell me, this is five times harder than last year, they would take last year over this year, that they're considering retiring, that worries me as a board member, as a parent, as a community member. So I do, there's a lot of ways, lots of buckets and lots of ways to spend it, but I remain concerned about that.
And I will share the council's discussions, and Member Bellamy is probably on these calls as well, they occur weekly, and I wouldn't just go, it's five times more difficult, I would say, it's 100 times more difficult. And I think all throughout the organization, that same thing is felt. We were home last year, I mean, we didn't put our pajamas on, I mean, we didn't even have to put pants on if we didn't want to. So now we're wearing pants and coming to work, and it's a struggle, because kids are struggling, families are struggling, teachers are struggling, we're short of subs, I mean, this isn't anything that I haven't shared from day one with the board about why, it's like, whoa, whoa, we're trying to operate here. But philosophically, from that federal level, it is very clear, and this comes directly from the administration that's there, there has at no other time been pumped in as much money as there has been in the last two years into public education in history, by the dollar amount, it's huge. And so if, again, hit back on that, if there are no outcomes, that's why they at least said, you have to at least spend 20% on learning loss, if there isn't a return on the investment, there might not ever be as much influx into public education as we have seen, and they have real worries about that on Capitol Hill, and they're sharing that through these organizations.
these organizations. And whether we believe them or not, or agree or disagree with the current administration, that is the reasoning. So it isn't about here in Anchorage, I don't want to get any kind of feeling about not caring about locally, we don't want to spend it on here. I mean, we're actually recommending, we put 30 million in this year for our teachers and we're recommending even more and saving it so that we can the next few years. And I, I mean, it's almost a misnomer to say reduce class sizes because we're just trying to keep them the same, like minimize like the impact of lost revenue and increasing costs, you know, to our system. And so it isn't any secret about just the work that this year has had on us. It's tremendous. It's hard, especially with the unknown of staffing. It's huge. It's every day, it's waking up at 4:00 AM, filling your rooms and what can I do? And I can't be there because of my kid, you know? And I mean, there's real struggles internally as well as real struggles with our families. So that isn't it. This is truly kind of a monumental time in the country that they're looking at globally, really to say, okay, look, you said money was what it was about. We just pumped in 123 million into Anchorage School District and tell me what the return on investment was. And so it's not to be flippant, but those are the real conversations with the lobbyists, with the lawyers, with the people that are pulling those triggers down in in the federal government. And and that's just the reality. And then here we sit in our classrooms trying to keep them open, keep them together, you know, open, keep schools open, keep kids healthy, figure out testing, assessment, you know, teach a new day when man, I only have half my kids here. I mean, all of those are real on the ground and then there's those real things here. And somehow there's this this chasm in between. But but those are the kinds of conversations that they literally have written in writing warnings about to us. And I don't know about the the president of the school boards thing. So we, you know, didn't go with what they said totally, but we didn't totally go one way or the other. We took a happy medium and put millions and millions of dollars into our staffing because we know, I mean, the first thing you need is people. People keep schools open. People teach.
Right. And I think SIR2, we put 30 million and that was 200 and how many staff, 230?
There's about 255 FTE for the for the 30 million. And then we also had the 20 FTE in virtual as well as the IT staff that were in the one-to-one.
And and I guess part of what, and I don't know, I won't say people don't understand, I guess part of the reality is there just aren't any people, if we even have, we got the money, it's not a money thing right now. It's, it's a human resource thing. We just don't, in terms of immediate relief right now.
And a good example is the board meeting tonight where you'll see a budget transfer request from special ed for FTE that would have been teachers or or therapists or whatever. And instead, it's a budget transfer to contract those services out. I mean, it
Which is something we have not done for years.
We've seen the bus drivers this year, the student nutrition, it really, it's about getting people to come back to work. And and we're seeing it all over our city, we're seeing it all over our country. It's not unique to Anchorage.
So I'll go back to Member Lessons. Did you get, I mean, I, I think you got some reactions to your comments, but did you have, what was your actual question? How to put more money into teachers? I guess I don't think, I don't know that it's a money thing?
I don't know that it's an answerable question, but I feel like it's incredibly pertinent. How will we keep the teachers that we have here to, oh, to teach another day?
You know, unfortunately, one of the realities we have, if we can't increase revenue and we pay more for something we have today and we used to be able to afford 10 of them and now we can afford eight of them, then we lose the other two. And that's, that's why it's so urgent to work with the legislature to increase operational funding. There's not more money just because we know we need to spend more on anything, whether it's electricity, healthcare, insurance, people. It still was that initial same amount of money. So the more we pay for all those other things, the only thing you can do is cut. And and so you can't have everything, you can't have smaller class sizes and have, spend your money more on on that. I mean, it's, I really think this is a year to push for the legislature, that the oil costs are higher or the oil prices are higher. The funding is there this year, it really is time for a concerted effort to try to change the BSA because that's what will give us the flexibility to do increases, not focusing one-time SIR funding that we have to also provide analyzed data to show that it made a difference on students. We need to, we need to, I would hope we would focus those funds on student outcomes as much as we can and then really push for an increase in state funding, which is where you finally start catching up for those inflationary gaps.
And Madam President, I know I was kind of just, you know, shared, you know, about the pans. I just want everyone to know that last year, when we were in a place with last year, we, it was difficult because we had to change everything we did. And now that we're back, it's even more difficult. And I think we came into this year thinking, oh, it'll be like how we knew it. Well, it's not. And that, that's really why I, you know, shared, yeah, it's, last year wasn't a piece of cake for certain, and I just made a joke about that. It was difficult, but what we had expected to start this year was a little bit with more reason, kind of how we were in the summer and we were hit with the Delta variant and increased and lower people. So to your question, you know, lower ability to hire employees and stuff, it's really kind of taking care of things that we know we can take care of to keep people because the stressors are about not having the support, you know, not having the support in classrooms. And so, and increase, I mean, the huge increase in insurance alone this year for teachers, and it's a real thing when they say, wait a minute, I'm making less than I did this year because of last year. They went up on the scale, but their insurance increased more than that. And I think Member Higgins mentioned the healthcare, so that's a reality. So just understanding all of these things, I think we came in with a mindset that, oh, it's finally over. And we were hit with this tremendous start that we're now getting on step. And hopefully we can, you know, continue, but it's, it's doing what we can with what we have, where we are and and sharing that. And certainly, one of those things is is not severely increasing classrooms because I hear right now that it's difficult for education of kids. And so part of that is to to keep those class sizes lower. And that's where we wanted to put a good portion of the funds, support in teaching and learning, there's a good portion of the funds to support PD, what they know, what they can do, wrapping around the services of the people who are doing the work.
Thank you. Are there any closing comments? Oh, because yes, Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. For the, for the folks that are actually watching this on streaming, and thank you very much for doing so, really appreciate that audience out there. They might be thinking about it like their household budget. If we came into a lot of money, they wouldn't, they'd probably save some, they'd probably put some aside. But unfortunately, the federal government is mandating we spend this within a pretty restrictive timeframe. So I just want to make that point. They're thinking, well, why don't you guys save some of that money if you're getting 130 million? Well, we're under federal guidelines and we have to expend it within a very limited number of years.
That's a great point. And with that, I'd like to thank Mr. Jim, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Ratcliffe for your, for guiding us through the, the presentation. We appreciate it. And I'll accept a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal and contracts.
Motion to adjourn.